I call this regular meeting of the North Adams City Council to order for August 13th, 2024. This meeting is being recorded and it may also be viewed live on Northern Berkshire Community Television and on YouTube dot com at North Adams. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Blackmer?
Here.
Bona?
Here.
Breen?
Here.
Fitch?
Here.
Morrow?
Here.
Oleskowitz?
Here.
Shade?
Here.
Wilkinson?
Here.
Sapienza?
Here.
Okay, nine members present, we have a quorum. Okay, please rise for a moment of silent remembrance. This week, we remember Mary Cody, second grade teacher from Graylock Elementary School, and Mary Ann Santelli who worked for the North Adams Public Schools.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of minutes, we do not have any printed minutes this evening.
I didn't print them.
Okay. Okay, hearing of visitors on the agenda, this is an opportunity for the public to speak for the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you have reached the two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended, and as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks, anybody for hearing of visitors tonight. Please step up to the mic, name and address for the record.
Eric Kearns, 1413 Mass Ave, here representing tourists. Good evening, councilors, thank you very much for your diligence and patience over the last months as we've worked through this matter. A few days ago, we passed the four-month mark since the joint meeting on April 9th when the planning board voted to recommend council approval of this zoning amendment. Since that time, we have continued to work diligently with our neighbor and with the council to look for alternative options to the current process, and despite our earnest efforts, no alternatives have proved viable, and at this point, we need to be able to move forward within the city's existing mechanism. This zoning change request, as we submitted in March, is legitimate, reasonable, and as confirmed by the city solicitor, legal. Our lack of sufficient safe office space is now adversely affecting our hiring ability and our team growth and cohesion. As such, we ask the council to approve the request and allow the process to move forward to the next stage, seeking site plan approval from the planning board. We will need to submit an application by September 4th to be on the October planning board agenda, and having sufficient time to collaborate with our neighbors on the specifics of that site plan will yield the best possible result. As we have demonstrated over the past four months, we are clearly and reliably committed to developing a plan that will meet our needs as a growing business while also minimizing any effect on the existing character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for hearing of visitors? Council Paper Number 10,00674-8, An Ordinance Amending the Revised Zoning Map of North Adams by Expanding and Extending Westerly to Rickard Street, the present B2 zoning district on State Road, so as to rezone all of Assessor's Map 95, Lot 40, as B2. This was passed to a second reading at the meeting of June 25th, 2024, and postponed from the meeting of July 23rd, 2024. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Abstain.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
No.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Seven yeas, one nay, one abstain.
Council Paper Number 11,00646-D, An Ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the city of North Adams, Chapter Z, Section 10 dot 12, entitled License Marijuana Establishments, postponed from the meeting of July 9th, 2024. Do we have a motion?
Can we get a report first?
Move to adopt.
Second. Okay, Counselor Shade, would you like to?
Excuse me, point of order?
I'm sorry?
Would the motion be to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law?
Yes.
Point of order?
Yes.
This also still needs to go through the zoning board because it's a zoning change. They have not met on this, so the motion should be to send this to the zoning board or to have a joint meeting.
It shouldn't be a joint meeting, yeah.
Counselor Wilkinson?
For clarity, because we just seem to be pushing this through, the general government committee met on this, they came up with recommendations, the mayor had come forth and wanted to change from two to four, the general government committee had a different feeling and wanted it to be unrestricted, and none of that has been brought forward here. So could somebody specifically tell me what we are voting for?
Counselor Blackmer?
I think we need to rescind the motion, and it needs to go to a joint public hearing.
Okay, Counselor Oleskowitz?
Actually, it's probably better for Counselor Shade to give an update here because we only recommended certain languages to come back in front of us tonight because there's still a whole lot to work on that needs to be finalized by the city solicitor.
Okay, Counselor Breen?
I have a question, has this been brought before the city solicitor?
Counselor Shade?
Yeah, I can give an update on everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Has it?
So this has gone through the city solicitor, the language that is in your pocket is not the full, complete language that is being recommended by the general government committee. We had several changes that we made. The first was to, by a two-to-one vote, to include the language that opposes outdoor grow. The second, by a two-to-one vote, was to eliminate any language in regards to social consumption. The third was to change the number of licenses, we came up with an arbitrary number of 20 because we were unsure if there could be a cap or not. I have since looked into this and found that there is no requirement to have a cap on the number of licenses, which means our recommendation would be to not have a cap at all, to not have a limit on the number of licenses available. And then finally, there is other definition language that was included at our general government committee that is not in this pocket that we moved by a two-to-one vote to move forward. There is another section that we moved to exclude, and that will be brought back later on to become an ordinance outside of the zoning, the zoning piece as recommended by our attorneys, and our attorneys were present and on the call during the meeting of our general government committee. So the attorney helped draft the language you see with you with the mayor, new language was introduced, and the new language is not in this pocket.
Counselor Breen?
Yeah, to follow up on that question, I received a call from one of the principals at the establishment on State Road, is it Clear Sky?
It's Clear Sky, yes.
And he said he's had some discussions with the mayor and was going to have some further discussions, and this was a few weeks ago, and I'd like to know what update her has been because he's quite concerned that he made an investment into North Adams under the old ordinance, and it's kind of like a liquor license, we're changing the rules. And the other thing is that there's also the part about impact, are we collecting money on the impact part of the marijuana? And the third part I have is, on this distance, if we're talking about the school entrance for the purpose to be able to establish one, but it also is a state law that says you can't have drug activity within a certain number of feet, so, and it's measured different, it's measured point-to-point, so my question is, we're having an ordinance that's not in line with the state law, so I'd like to know how we're going to figure that part out.
Okay, Counselor Oleskowitz?
Probably better for Counselor Shade to do it again because there is a variance granted for the footage from the center points of each door, so a lot of these ordinances that are dictated by mass general law have changed since then, the whole committee host agreements have changed with money, but I'd probably say it's better for Ashley to, or Counselor Shade to give an explanation.
Counselor Shade?
Yeah, so as far as language on the school, MGL does give us the ability to create our own language around that, it also gives us the ability to include special permits if we want to waive that, so those options are in there, we can create our own language. As far as MGL, MGL has changed since things have been legalized, there's new adherence from the Cannabis Commission that we are still trying to figure out based on legalities and based on that they've released language that doesn't quite fit with MGL, so there's conflicts there, there's a lot of conflicts in a lot of communities going on with that in terms of equity and the equity pieces. As far as what we collect in revenue, Mayor Maxi, would you be able to answer that question?
I just want the counselor.
Through the chair to the mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Mayor.
So if I may, just a couple of quick things, one, I'm a little confused about your format here tonight because my staff and I and Attorney Castello spent a decent amount of time with the general government committee, and I was under the impression that the committee was going to be making recommendations about what we talked about, so it's kind of a little choppy, so with that being said, I want to answer Counselor Breen's questions, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so yes, we did meet with the gentleman from Clear Sky, Anthony, who's been a great business partner and a great community member here in North Adams. His concern was oversaturation of the market, they were paying impact fees, but because of the change in the cannabis control rules, those payments have stopped coming to the city of North Adams, and there with me one second. So in fiscal year '23, we collected $521,000, most of that was driven by Clear Sky sales and impact fees. In fiscal year '24, we collected $342,000, the difference really is because of the stopping of the payment of the impact fees. The discussion was had was that, you know, we have many people knocking on our door for this industry, and what should we do? So as I explained to the general government committee, my big thing is outdoor grow versus indoor grow, and the number of licenses, I randomly put a number of four because I think we have four viable companies knocking on our door right now, but the committee itself felt that, you know, we should keep it unlimited, or they set a random, a random number. But the document I originally submitted to you two weeks ago, four weeks ago, whenever, maybe it was May, was vetted through the city solicitor, Nicole Constanza, who is our cannabis attorney. The document that was submitted to the general government committee has not been vetted to, through the city solicitor, Nicole had that shared with her about an hour before the meeting. So whatever you decide here, I'm happy to return to Attorney Constanza, but I just wanted to make sure everybody understood in the room that, or at least I did, that there was going to be a full report of what was discussed that night.
Counselor Blackmer?
A couple of things to bring up, I know that there's drug use, drug abuse laws around distances to schools, selling or dealing within 1,000 feet of a school, but because that is illegal substances, and Massachusetts has deemed this, so I think the footage that we're talking about, the 500 versus 1,000, I think we're kind of comparing apples to oranges in that case, but I also think that we need a document with the proposed changes. One, we need a document with proposed changes, two, this needs to go to the zone, the planning board because it's a zoning, it needs a joint meeting, three, I personally don't think we want unlimited, I think the, I think Clear Sky made a very valid point, there's certain, there is a very expensive barrier to entering, entering the field or whatever you want to call it of the business of marijuana, whether you're growing a facility or your retail facility, and some of the businesses that have already ponied up that money, I think it's a little unfair to then make it unlimited, I also think it'll blow up in our face, everybody says, oh, well, if we made 400, or 342,000 off of Clear Sky, if we have a bunch more, we'll make that times however many, I don't think that's the case, I think there is a a certain market that we have, and as we've seen across the state, a lot of communities and a lot have had actually their marijuana retailers close because too many opened, and then what happens is then we end up, they all don't make it, so they all close, and then we end up with nothing, so I think we, I think having an unlimited amount is not a good idea, but also, we need a document with the actual changes in it, that the general government proposed, and then a legal opinion on that would probably be helpful, and then also where we're going with the zoning board.
Okay, thank you. Also, may I add to that, with the high number of licenses permitted, what if we get 20 applications and we don't satisfy all 20 applications, what's going to happen then? Are we going to be facing lawsuits against the city because we said we could have 20 licenses, but we're not permitting 20 licenses? So I think that's something to think about, too, I'm just going to put that out there, too. Counselor Shade?
When it comes to establishing a marijuana business, there's a long checklist of things that have to be met through the Cannabis Commission, and then also a host community agreement needs to be completed in North Adams. Without those things, a business is not going to start, so there's still a level of control, there's still mechanisms of control. If somebody wants to open a business, there's really not a point of restricting them if they meet all of the requirements, things, yes, we do have a market saturation, clearly we wouldn't be able to support 20 marijuana businesses, but if they want to try, why are we stopping them?
Counselor Wilkinson?
I have to agree, this is America, we don't prohibit on number of Cumberland Farms that sell coffee or sugar, we don't put a limit on gas stations, we don't put a limit on just about anything other than maybe liquor stores.
Liquor stores, yeah.
I just said liquor stores.
Yep.
Thank you. Why should we put a limit on this? Can North Adams support 20? I picked the number 20 in general government because I was told at the time that we couldn't just go unlimited. To be honest, it was a sarcastic statement that went through, 20 got shot down, I mean, 10 got shot down, 20 passed, so there's the absurdity of that right there. But in any event, it's just, it's time to let American business do American business, why should we control it as, oh, it's going to be bad, so I think we should limit to four, because then maybe as Counselor, Blackmer said, then we'll have none, nah, that's never going to happen, there'll always be some. Let them fight it out amongst themselves, the only one that benefits out of this is the consumer because they get a lower price, so I'm all for unlimited, just for the record.
Okay, Counselor Bona?
Yes, same thing, I don't support a limit for reasons that were already explained, the, and actually, we don't limit the liquor license, the state does. You're right. So if that became a decision in our hands, I have a feeling we'd allow more, because it's not just a case of these being just for North Adams, and a lot of times, that's the population that's considered when the limits are considered, because we're actually looking at all Northern Berkshire, because a lot of the small towns that are around us don't have commercial strips where some of these businesses would probably be able to do well being set up, so, you know, having more of a community where there's more commercial properties and strips and things like that where they would work better serves all of Northern Berkshire, not just, not just North Adams. And also, as, you know, if you look at and say it's a health reason, are there going to be more people who are going to buy it if there's more stores? I don't know, you know, that's like saying there's more people who are going to buy pizza because we have so many pizza places, I'm sure there's probably some pizza owners out there that would love to say, I want to be just one of three pizza places, but I don't think that's the government's job to help benefit specific businesses to say, we're going to limit so that you benefit, because what's to say when we set those limitations? Those are going to be the best ones, you know, they can also fall back on being the best ones, because it'll be like, we don't have to worry about competition, I, you know, I think I did bring it up at the meeting, you know, when, when V&amp;V wanted to open, we were already at our cap for liquor licenses, and they were asking us to do a home rule petition, and we were looking at it and saying, well, you got this liquor store that wants to supply a lot more choices, higher end versus what was already out there, and we were saying, no, we can't do that because we're already capped at three, and that could be the same thing with this, you know, while we maybe have, you could say we have some high-quality shops, but what's to say they stay that way, you know, they, they can be purchased and they can, you know, you see businesses that look great once, and five years later, they don't, but if they know there's always competition that could be there, I think it's better for the businesses and it's better for the consumers at the end. I don't think we're going to see 20 applicants, you know, I really don't, any smart business is going to say, you know what, there is five, there's a six, I don't see room for one more, but you never know, someone's going to be saying, I got one that I can do better, I got one that can do different, I got one that can supply something that they're not, and I just don't think it should be the local government's choice to say, sorry, we're not going to allow you because we have five others that are already doing it before you.
Okay, anybody else?
And also, just to say, we are, I have a feeling we will be going to probably where you're going to rescind your motion because, but I think you brought your motion in and I second it mainly so we could get into discussion, because it does have to go through other processes before us just voting on this tonight.
I'm more than happy to.
It's opened up discussion at this point.
Counselor Oleskowitz?
I'm more than happy to rescind my motion, but I could see that we were dwelling into Never Never Land there without a discussion, and they were ready to vote on something, nobody even knew what we were talking about, so I'm more than happy to rescind my motion.
Not yet.
Not yet?
Not yet.
We're still talking. Oh, sorry, well, all right.
Counselor Oleskowitz?
I'll wait until we're finished with our discussion here and I was ready to make a motion.
Okay.
Another motion now that one was rescinded.
Okay.
So I don't know if the conversation is still.
Any further, any further discussion on this, anybody else would like to weigh in on this at this point?
Go for it.
I don't know if it's out of place, but I'd like to make a motion to return back to general government because some of the language changes haven't been vetted, we're getting into conversations of stuff that wasn't part of tonight's agenda, because there were, some councils were there and saw that a lot of the language changes weren't even approved by the city solicitor yet, so I feel it's probably to our benefit to bring it back to general government until we get all the languages in order, in a way we can represent this ordinance as properly amended and vetted.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
Just to be clear, Counselor Wilkinson has rescinded?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Wilkinson has rescinded his motion?
Yep.
Second?
Okay, second, Counselor Shade?
I would just amend that to also send that to the solicitor for an opinion on the new language that we agreed to from the meeting.
I believe in the last meeting, we did have the city solicitor joined in, maybe we could do that again, and in our next meeting, maybe we can present back to the full council all the recommendations that have been vetted and were pretty much covered.
Counselor Wilkinson?
We're under discussion?
We're under a motion right now.
We're under a motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
What is the motion that's on the table, please?
Send it back to general government.
Send it to the general government.
Send it back to general government.
And then there was a recommendation for an amendment to?
You can't amend something that hasn't been?
It's been seconded, Counselor Fitch seconded.
Okay.
Okay, so we have an amendment to return to general government with the, with the consult of the city solicitor.
Do we have a second, discussion?
Discussion, go ahead.
We've left everything pretty broad, we're sending it back to general government to come up with, just for clarification, to come with actual, an ordinance to present to the full council, is that, is that the goal here?
That is ordinance.
An amended ordinance?
That is the goal.
Okay.
Amended zoning ordinance.
Yes. Okay, so we have to vote on the amended ordinance. Counselor Shade?
Through the chair, I believe the mayor had something to add.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Again, I'm not trying to be a stickler, but I was under the impression at the general government meeting that the social justice piece or the equity piece, you were going to take out and recommend to the council the changes of the ordinance that I had put forth for discussion, and then at that point, we, secondly to that, we were going to address all of your, those last two pages under a separate concept, but if the recommendation of general government has changed?
That, that has not changed, we are not including that, that piece in this, but they still want clarification on the language.
Of everything that you presented?
Yes, of everything that we voted on.
Okay.
Counselor Blackmer?
The document we have in front of us is a document that you proposed and was vetted through the city solicitor.
Yes, ma'am.
It then went to general government, who made a bunch of changes, that is not the document in front of us.
Correct.
So we need the document that is being proposed as a, that the general government committee is recommending or not, depending on the votes, and then also, that's got to come back, it's got to be vetted by the solicitor again, and then it's also, again, I'll bring it up, we need to schedule a joint meeting, once we have language, I don't want to send it to the planning board and then make a ton of changes, because then they'll, they won't be happy, so I just, also, we need a date certain on this, when do you want it back?
Okay, Counselor Oleskowitz?
I was making a motion for clarity on what was approved through the city solicitor, what was deemed correct, but we still, that if we were to do this again, we'd be amending this thing twice, because we still have all of paragraph 14 that hasn't even been touched that, and that's quite lengthy. Does everybody have a copy of what was given to us last, before last Thursday, because there is a whole paragraph 14?
That is not included in this packet because this went out before the general government.
That has so much sub-context in it, it hasn't even been addressed.
That's the confusion.
You all set, Counselor?
Thank you very much.
Counselor Wilkinson?
I believe concerning number 14, general government wanted to kind of do this in two stages, we were doing changes of the ordinance, and then we were going to come back and do the, the, chapter 14 afterwards.
Counselor Shade?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear?
Yes, that is correct.
Who's talking out of order over here? Ooh, everything throughout the room, we're all talking out of order.
Okay, are you finished on that one?
I just want some clarity, and I don't think there is any, yes, I'm done.
Okay, Counselor Shade?
Yes, paragraph 14, which is not in this packet, which was proposed to general government, is not going to be included in any of this because the recommendation from the city solicitor was that not be a part of zoning, that that be an ordinance on its own, completely outside, so that will not be included in any of this, it's not going to be included in this language, it's going to be something that's going to be worked on completely separately, and that has to do with municipal equity and making sure we're in compliance with the Massachusetts Cannabis Commission's new regulations on social equity. And that has to do with municipal equity and making sure we're in compliance with the Massachusetts Cannabis Commission's new regulations on social equity. Uh, and municipal equity as far as participation in marijuana businesses. We were recommended at the general government committee by the city solicitor not to include it in zoning. So it's not in here, it won't be in here, and it's not something we're going to vote on further. It's something that I'm going to bring back at a later date in a separate meeting. It's not going to be included in any of this, based on my recommendation from the city solicitor.
Counselor Blackmore?
There's one state so that people realize, the CCC, the Cannabis Control Commission, is a mess right now. Um, there's talk of taking it over, under, putting it under receivership. They don't have directors, they don't have, uh, I don't know, they put their executive director on administrative leave. The person who was doing one thing left, commissioners are leaving left and right, and it's a mess. So I, I don't have a lot of faith in what they're even doing, but that's just, I want people to be aware of that.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Again, for clarity, we're going to send this back to general government first. We're going to come up with the change in ordinance for zoning. And then we're going to come back and present that to the full council for their support or not support. And then we can send it to a joint meeting. I don't think, I don't think we should go directly to a joint meeting until we work out the particulars.
Agreed. Mayor, did you have something to add?
And, uh, going off of what Counselor Blackmore said, you know, we're all totally in agreement with the condition of the Cannabis Control Commission or that, that thereof. However, the, this is the bare minimum that our city solicitor has recommended that we address to be in line with the regulation. This is the bare minimum to address some of the, the, the openings, the, you know, indoor versus outdoor growth, the number and things like that. It's totally at your discretion, but I just want to be clear on a couple of things. I'm not a fan of unlimited, but you're the legislative branch and that's up to you. And I, I'm really, nobody's talked about indoor versus outdoor growing, that was a big topic of our general government committee. So with that being said, happy to send it back to general government, but you need to provide clear direction of what you want the city solicitor to review. Because she's already reviewed what is in front of you tonight, so.
Ms. Seid, did you have anything to add to that? Okay, thank you. Counselor Bona?
I don't think it's going to be easy even when sending it back, cause if you sat through the last meeting, I mean, I don't, I think they were all like two to one votes, you know? So that was with three people. Um, this is obviously something that I think the public has, uh, various opinions on. Um, I mean, the three, the three things that they mainly discussed was the number of, uh, businesses that could be set up. And again, some may want it limited, some may want 10, some may say unlimited. The other was the, um, uh, you know, outdoor versus just indoor. And again, there was difference opinions on that. Uh, you know, I, I could see where personally myself, I, again, if it was allowed, and, and these all have to be approved, you know? Even indoor, if it's in a neighborhood, um, you know, neighbors will, will want assurance that they're not going to be bothered by it. Um, Counselor Olefskowitz, uh, mentioned during the meeting, and actually I, I, I drove by and noticed that, and the, the facility that's in Adams. When you drive on, you know, current highway by the mobile station in Adams, I don't know if that's current highway there, Holland Avenue.
Holland Avenue.
Um, you open your windows, you can smell it, and that's an indoor facility. So if you can smell it driving by, obviously, I would think residents in that neighborhood can also smell it. So indoor, there's no insurance that it's odor free. And so I would say, would you rather have a building in your, you know, that's close by that's indoors? Or would you rather have, you know, some acreage on a farm up on top of a mountain, which one's better? You know, so that's why I'm just saying, I don't know, saying completely no outdoors is, uh, again, something that some people are going to be, have difference of opinions with. And then the, um, third thing was, um, well, there was the social aspect, that I think was being taken right out. That wasn't even questioned, but there was a third, uh, third point.
The school.
What's that?
The school distance.
Yeah, I thought that was, that was, I thought, supported. But anyway, you know, I have a feeling if we all go out and we talk to 20 different people, we're going to get difference opinions. So even when it goes back to general government and they come back with a recommendation, I don't, I mean, this is one of those times that the council's probably going to be split on different bullet points. And, um, you know, that's why we're all here, you know, it'd not always be just one vote.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to amend, to return this to general government. And the amendment was to consult with the solicitor on the new language. That is what we have before us now, so we need to vote on the amendment.
Yeah, I was going to ask.
What's that?
We were supposed to, we're supposed to vote on the amendment and it's the Counselor Shade's leisure to recommend a return date.
Yes.
Um.
Well, I can be part of the original.
First meeting of September.
I'm saying what meeting?
First meeting of September.
I don't think you can do it by then.
That gives us one.
Oh, in a week, two weeks?
Three.
Not on my, not on my calendar. Okay, I see what you're pointing. There's a lot of ground to cover there. You know, I'm talking out of order, I apologize.
So we're voting on the amendment?
Yep, we're voting on the amendment to return to general government and consult with the solicitor for return date of first September.
Fine.
Counselor Blackmore?
Wait, my understanding is the original motion was to return to general government.
That was.
The amendment is to consent to solicitor.
Consent to solicitor.
So we vote on the amendment.
Right, okay, so.
And then we vote on the motion as amended.
Okay, so let's, uh, okay, so let's, uh, vote on the, uh, to send it to the solicitor?
Yes.
Okay, we have a second on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. And returning to the original, uh, motion to return to general government for, and return.
Point of order?
Go ahead, Counselor.
For clarification, my first meeting of September would be September 10th.
Oh, okay, that's good.
So more than enough time for us to get this finished.
Okay, so the motion is return to general government and return to the council in the first meeting of September. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Council paper number 12,00191 dash one, an ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the city of North Adams, chapter 15, entitled litter, sections two, three, eight point one, eight point two, 16, and 25 postponed from the meeting of July 23rd, 2024. Counselor Blackmore, do you have an update for us?
Um, so. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm mixing up my papers here. So the, the paper as presented has, um, some recommendation, um, and then it's been through the solic, city solicitor. And they made questions slash recommendations. We made things like change the title from witnessing police officer littering to police officer witness of littering. Um, they're all, all the changes are in here, um, for the first, I can't, it's hard to follow because it's, um, there we go. The ordinance to amend the revised marijuana, okay, so 15 litter, okay. So it's been reviewed by the solicitor, um, we put things like commissioner of public safety replaced with police department, things like that. So, um, I think that's all in here and I'm also, I'm comfortable with it. Um, as far as the littering is, we met, we went over a couple of the changes. I know that when President Sapienza started this last year when he was, uh, Chair of Public Safety. So my motion would be to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law.
Okay, we have a motion to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law, do we have a second?
Second?
Okay. Counselor Fitch? Yep.
I do have a question for the clerk. Since it's, since our, we've added in the whole section on the wildlife and it's still part of chapter 15, I think. Is it possible, is it enough pages to publish as a municipal bulletin?
I don't think there was enough pages, to be honest with you.
Okay. I, I, you know, I can't help but ask, if we can save money, I want to save money.
Of course, yeah.
I agree.
I guess we should have added more language then, get another page in there.
Double space.
I'm using 18-point font next time.
Narrow, narrow margins, yeah, well, yeah, that would be good.
There you go, use 18-point font, that, the way everybody can read it. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, we're three pages short, just as an FYI.
FYI, okay, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Council paper number 12,00191 dash two, an ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the city of North Adams by adding a new chapter 15A entitled Feeding of Wildlife postponed from the meeting of July 23rd, 2024. Counselor Blackmore?
Um, move to pass through second reading and publish as required by law.
Second.
Motion second?
We, uh, give an update, basically, I think I gave an update here. We, we talked about, um, rodent proof, um, containers. We talked about the, um, feeding wildlife and not feeding wildlife and limiting, you know, limiting when people do it. We gave definitions to what garbage, trash, and refuse are, what wildlife is, what wildlife rodent proof waste receptacles are, um, et cetera, et cetera. And then we, um.
Counselor Blackmore, could you bring your mic closer, thank you.
Okay, so we made some changes based on the recommendations of the, um, solicitor. Again, the unintentional defining, um, the thing with the suggested penalties, um, what I haven't done is the appendix. Because I have no idea where in the appendix we should put this, but we referred to appendix D here for now. Um, and I think it's, you know, we've had problems with, with rodents, we've had problems with bears in neighborhoods. Um, and I think it's important to pay attention and respond to constituents. And I think that Counselor Sapienza and the previous Public Safety Committee did a lot of the, most of the legwork on this. And we just had to go through the suggestions of the solicitor and make the recommendations, and that's what you have in front of you.
Okay, uh, any further discussion on this? Hearing none. You have a motion on the floor to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, council paper number 12,00293 dash one, an ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the city in North Adams under chapter 13, section 26.1, entitled School Zones, Adding Hodges Crossroads. Do we have a motion?
Move to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law.
Second?
This is, this is the one that you added into here.
Okay. Talked to it before.
Because it was a link to this one.
Oh, okay, all right, all right. So on this, uh, section 26 dash one, entitled School Zones, this was pulled in, uh, when we first discussed this several meetings back. It was discussed to hold off on this and we had other parking ordinance changes coming through the, uh, traffic commission. So we held off on it to, uh, publish it to, uh, to include all the ordinances at the same time to save publishing costs. So we didn't have to publish subsequent notices, so, um, you have a call for a motion to table?
Can we send a motion that's currently on the floor?
Yes, can we have rescind, rescind the motion?
Yeah, I'll rescind the motion.
Okay. So do we have a motion to file this?
Move to file.
Counselor Bona? Are we motion to file or just postpone till we get the others?
Yeah.
The other ones are here.
Yeah, so that'll be coming up in the next section.
I, I.
I guess I thought that's what I was moving.
I question on whether we should table this particular item rather than postpone and vote with the others. This is, if you table this, you kill us.
Okay.
File, the, the motion was to file.
I thought, I heard table.
I did say table, but.
I, my motion was to file.
File, I, did I?
Counselor, uh.
No problem, no problem. Correct me if I'm wrong, should we have done 393 dash two, the communication first and then moved on to these? They're all chapter 13. You have two ordinances and a communication in the middle and they're all down with chapter 13.
Right.
This is your, your new one with the communication.
Okay, that'll include the Hodges Crossroad.
Which is your letter coming back and then the new ordinance.
So I do have a communication regarding all the changes.
So maybe they were misnumbered on the agenda?
Well, I'm, no, it's right next.
It's coming up next.
It's, it's dash two, it's 12, 320, or 12, 393 dash two is the communication, which has the letter that came back from the traffic commission. And the 12, 393 dash two is the updated ordinance, which includes the 12, 393 dash one and.
Should be 12, 293.
Yeah, 12, no, 12, 393.
Okay.
Dash one and what the recommendations were. Additional recommendations from the traffic commission, so they're all on one. So that is why 12, 393 dash one was the old one that can be filed. 12, 393 dash two, communication in the 12, 393 dash two ordinance takes over the other one.
Excuse me?
Well, they're right, one right after another.
Counselor Blackmore?
Point of clarification, on the agenda, it says 12, 393 dash one, that's just 26.1. We are going to file that because it's combined with the other one.
That is correct.
And on the agenda, it says 12, 393 point two, that's the communication explaining the situation from President Sapienza. But on our agenda, it says 12, 293 dash two, that's a typo.
Oh.
Yes, okay.
That's what I think has got everybody confused.
I do apologize because it was in the book as 12, 293.
Yep, that's a typo.
Okay.
Okay, so.
That is my fault.
393, which is, includes section 26, the one in the first one, and then section 49 and 50.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we filed the other two things, okay.
Counselor Moore?
That was also my question.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion to file, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Council paper number 12,00393 dash two, a communication from President Sapienza regarding the response from the traffic commission and the referred updates to chapter 13 for school zones and parking. Okay. I'll read, uh, my communication. August 4th, 2024, the traffic commission at its last regular meeting on June 7th, 2024, voted to recommend the amendments in the following parking ordinances and the removal of a school zone in the area of the former Sullivan School on Kemp Avenue. The details of these changes are as follows. Chapter 13, article four, section 13 dash 26, entitled Schools Zones, delete Kemp Avenue 500 feet norally and 500 feet southerly from the Sullivan School driveway. 20 miles per hour school days only between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. Chapter 13, motor vehicles and traffic, section 13 dash 49, entitled Prohibited Parking on Certain Streets, delete Bank Street, Easterly Side, Bank Street no longer exists. Section 13 dash 50, entitled Parking Time Limited on Designated Streets, subsection entitled, subsection F, entitled 15 Minute Parking. Delete Center Street, Southerly Side, from a point 172 feet from the Easterly Line of Marshall Street, extending 160, 106 feet. In an easterly direction, said area shall be for registry business only and shall be in effect Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. only. And then we are going to delete Houghton Street, Easterly Side, from Liberty Street to Brooklyn Street. There is, there was a store there at one time that no longer exists. Section 1350 dot, dot one, entitled Other Restricted Parking Times, delete Williams Street, Westerly Side, from a point beginning 160 feet norally from the north curb line of School Street and extending 80 feet during the hours of 7:00 a.m. and to 3:00 p.m. Section thirteen fifty dat, dot one, entitled Other Restricted Parking Times, delete Williams Street, Westerly Side from a point beginning a hundred and sixty feet northerly from the north curb line of School Street and extending eighty feet during the hours of seven a.m. and two, three p.m., Monday through Friday through June thirtieth, nineteen ninety-four. Johnson School no longer exists. And insert at the end of the section, East Main Street, no parking from the western side of the driveway of two thirty-eight East Main Street, which is currently the MCLA Advancement Office. Yeah, two thirty-eight extending sixty feet westerly during the hours of eight a.m. and five p.m., Monday through Friday. That was because of a limited site distance when people are pulling out of there. If cars are parked right up to that driveway, they have to pull out way out into East Main Street before they can safely see if there's any traffic coming up the street. And there've been a couple of near misses there with personnel from MCLA subsequently, and that's why that was recommended. Lastly, furthermore, the City Council, we had voted to approve the addition of the school zone on Hodges Crossroad in the vicinity of the McCann Technical High School. It was also voted to hold off publication of the ordinance change and to pass to a second reading until all changes were approved by the Traffic Mission. That process has been completed. Okay. I'm going to file that communication without objection, and let's move on to the, to the order. Council Paper number twelve thousand three ninety-three dash two, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams under Chapter Thirteen, Sections Twenty-nine, forty-nine, twenty-six, forty-nine, and fifty.
Moved to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counselor Shade?
Um, I have a question on the change around Center Street.
Okay.
Um, there wasn't really any explanation of that.
What it was is there was, it was a zone for registry parking only, so if you were doing business when the registry was in that building.
Got it.
There were signs there for that, and now the registry is no longer there. So.
No, that.
Counselor Breen?
I received a few calls from the people who live up on Kemp Avenue. That school zone has been there for sixty-plus years. And looking at the state, what their recommendations and their procedures, the booklet I sent to you, the safety zone at twenty miles an hour is what you put when you decommission a school and you still have a playground and you still have a large quantity of kids in that area. So, and some of the people that I spoke to said, we've been working with the police, and they've been very helpful in what they said they're gonna patrol more. So, right now, you know, especially with the camping at the, at the lake, there's a lot of high-speed cars there. And, you know, the idea of putting in speed limits are to make it safer. And if we go and take the school one out, it'll move to thirty miles an hour where now it's twenty. A safety zone is at twenty, and they recommend that, that you do it in this particular area.
Question? Counsel Wilkinson?
I, I, I have, I followed up on the safety zone after you mentioned it at a previous meeting, so I thought it was a great idea. However, I consulted with Mary Ann King of the Traffic Commission, and she says there's no such thing.
Well, that's interesting, because Brian told me that too, and I can send you the document. It, it was revised in two thousand twenty. Towns all over the state, especially the eastern one, that have more schools that are closing, adopted this. I, I know Brian was going to give it to Mary Ann. I don't know if you got any feedback on that.
I did not get any feedback on that.
Just as a follow-up.
Yes.
It's a great idea, but it doesn't presently exist. If you want to put a safety zone, and I'll be one hundred percent in support of it, but it, it's not on our books.
Not on whose books?
North Adams. We do not have anything that's called a safety zone, according to the Chairman of the Traffic Commission. I think it's a great idea, but it does not exist.
Well, I have to do is read the state.
Can, I.
Counselor Shade had her hand up. Oh, okay, go ahead, Counsel Blackmer.
Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Ninety, Section Eighteen B, allows cities and towns to establish safety zones with a twenty mile an hour speed limit. These zones are intended to reduce the risk of conflict between vehicles and vulnerable road users in areas like crosswalks, driveways, and side streets. Safety zones can be found in places like parks, playgrounds, hospitals, senior citizen housing, and childcare center. I rescind my motion and make a new motion to, um, refer the, to continue this to the next meeting, so we can get, maybe change our definition and get a definition and, and take another look at this.
Okay. All right, so we. Send the motion, and we have a second?
I did, I rescinded it and then made it.
Yeah.
The, the other one that, um, I'm just kind of upset to see, on the school zone.
Point of order, I don't know if we have a motion on the floor.
My motion was to continue.
And there was a second.
Okay, so we have a motion to continue at this point.
So, 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 on Hodges Crossroad, um, the school is not eligible for a school zone, because the school needs to include at least one or more of grade one through eight. Like jury would be, you could have a school zone, because you have the seventh and eighth grade up there. But McCann, because it's a high school only, if you go back to the thing, they actually recommend to call it a safety zone. So, I think our ordinance should match up to what the laws are. And these were revised in two thousand twenty-one, and it's the booklet that I sent to you, and the people in Lenox can also help you. But I, I think putting in a school, a school zone at a high school when it's not proper on the state, I don't think that's a good idea. And I think we, we really, Kemp Avenue's a beautiful neighborhood. You know, we've closed the school, and now we're putting in, taking away the, the safety of the kids. I, I don't think that's a good idea. Common sense says if it's been there for sixty years, the kids are still up in the area, we should probably keep the speed limit at twenty.
Okay, one thing with the school zone, if it was designated, designated as a school zone, that twenty mile an hour limit is only between the hours listed, like, was it seven a.m. and four p.m. on school days?
The safety can be twenty-four, seven.
The, the safety zone can be twenty-four to seven, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I agree. Counsel Bona?
Um, maybe some other councils will remember, or the mayor might know. I think though it was before you, you came in, that we passed something with the Mass General Law, that any streets that didn't have signs that were within our residential neighborhoods, um, were automatically down to like twenty-five miles an hour. So, if a street doesn't have, if it's a residential neighborhood, and there were no signs on those streets, they are twenty-five miles an hour.
Yeah, it's interesting, through the, through the chair. It's actually thirty.
This law we passed was twenty-five.
Yeah, the, the state is thirty.
What?
It, it has it at thirty. It's twenty, thirty.
This isn't a safety zone. This was just, this was with.
Right.
When we passed it, it specifically said they would be twenty-five miles an hour.
Like Main Street, what is Main Street? What is Main Street at?
What's that?
What is Main Street at?
That I don't, well, it might have had signs. This was with streets that didn't have signs, so.
Counsel Bona, he's, he's correct. Anything that was residential that wasn't posted was, is twenty-five.
We can look back, because we did pass that. We accepted that Mass General Law that allowed that.
Yep. I do remember that. That was the last term we did that. Yep, yep. So, technically, if there's no speed limit sign up there, it is twenty-five miles per hour. Okay. All right, so we have a motion on the floor to refer this back to the Traffic Commission. Am I correct? No.
I moved to continue it. I didn't say to refer to traffic, but we can.
Okay.
I have a feeling we're gonna get the same result.
Okay. Motion to continue, um.
It's good, it, it is possible that could go to, it could go to public safety. And then public safety could accept or actually put in about the, the safety zone? Is that what you mean? Safety zone.
And according to, sorry.
Go ahead, Counsel Blackmer.
According to the law, the safety zones are set by, it's one of the few places that the city and towns can set zones and speed limits without the approval of MassDOT. And according to that, it is set by the City Council, except in Brockton and Boston, they have some special commission.
So, it, you may want to refer it to.
To move to, move to amend my motion to refer to public safety, refer back, um, second meeting in September.
Second. Okay, so, I think it would be easier if you rescinded your first motion.
I rescinded my first one.
Okay, you did rescind it.
And then I made a motion to con, to continue this.
Okay, all right.
And, and then I amended that to also include refer to public safety.
Counselor Wilkinson, you had your hand up?
There were so many changes in that, I just wanted to be clear. So, now it's being recommended to go back to public safety, which is where I think it should go. So, I'm fine.
Okay.
Did we have, did we vote on the amendment?
We did not.
We're gonna vote on the amendment now, so the amendment is to send it to public safety and once.
Uh, second meeting in September.
Second September.
September twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
Okay, so the amendment is to send it to public safety and with a return date of September.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opponent? Any opposed? And the first motion to refer it.
To continue it until.
Continue, yes. To continue. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Council Paper number twelve thousand four zero four, An Order Appropriating the Amount of Sixty-five Million Three Hundred and Sixty-two Thousand Eight Hundred and Fifty-nine Dollars for the Purpose of Paying the Cost to Constructing and Furnishing a New Graylock Elementary School to Support Pre-Kidergarten Through Grade Two, to be Located at One Hundred Phelps Avenue, Passed to a Second Reading and Published as Required by Law at the Special City Council Meeting of July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
Moved to adopt.
Moved to adopt. Second, we have motion and a second.
And this has to be published again?
It does have to be published again. Okay.
Okay. Does it, do we have to vote on it again or no?
Yes, we have to vote.
Okay, move to pass to another, another, move to pass to another reading and publish.
We already had a motion and a second. Don't we have to retract that?
Wait, can we clarify?
Counselor, or, I'm sorry, mayor?
I believe you already voted to have it published, correct?
We did.
So, it has to get published a second time with the vote and any amendments. So, I believe that this is the final passage. So, they vote, and then you're gonna publish, if they amend anything, you're gonna publish that, and then list the votes.
Okay, I was going by what, I was told by the Elections Office.
No, you've already published it once.
Yeah, and she said that I had to, Michelle from the Elections Office said that we had to publish it both times.
Yeah, step three, you've already published it once. Second reading and final passage of the lone order to be voted by the City Council. Step five, publish the lone order in full as may be amended in a local pe, newspaper once again as soon as it is practical after final passage. So, this would be your final passage.
And it has to be published with the final passage.
Correct.
Okay.
But it's not, but it's not a motion, that's just law. Yeah.
Process. Okay, so we're adopting it. We're voting to adopt a roll call vote tonight.
Yeah.
That is what then gets published.
You all set, Counselor?
Yeah, I think as, as amended, I thought maybe we could get out of having to publish it a second time, but obviously not, so I'm okay.
Okay, Counsel Breen?
What, what's our deadline? We, we have a, a pretty close deadline, correct, Mayor?
October twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
The deadline for the, of, the approval of the MSBA?
Yeah, no.
So, this.
Yes.
Yes, so this, the way the timeline has been worked out, that this, if Pablo's, I'm sorry, if approved tonight starts the clock ticking, we have to have the whole project approved by October twenty-fourth. And the city clerk will talk about the election dates later in the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, any further discussion? Hey, this is a roll call vote.
Point of order?
I'm sorry?
Counsel Shade.
Oh, Counsel Shade, yes.
Thank you. Um, so just to clarify, tonight when we vote, we're voting to, this is our final vote?
This is our final vote.
It'll get published again.
Yes.
And then there would be a publishing for the special election.
Yes.
Everybody, so everybody's on board?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, with that, I'm voting yes on this, because I believe that the voters should have the right to decide something this monumental when it comes to spending our, their money. So, I'm voting yes, so that we can send this to the voters and let them decide. Thank you.
Mayor, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that we do have Matt Fier from KP Law on standby if there was any further questions about anything.
Anybody have any further questions for the attorney at all? Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt. And we have a roll call vote, please.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Nine years.
Hey, motion. Council item, or Council Paper number twelve thousand four oh nine dash two, An Ordinance to Add the MGL Part One, Title Seven, Chapter Forty, Section Twenty-two G, Reference Under Article Twenty-nine, North Adams Commission on Disabilities, and New Paragraph Under Section Two dash one fifty-four, Passed to a Second Reading and Published as Required by Law at the Meeting of July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt.
Second, any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Nine years.
Okay, motion passes. Council Paper number twelve thousand four ten, Communication Number Fifty-four, from Mayor Maxey, recommending the confirmation of the list of election workers for a term to begin on August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four and expiring on August twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
Move to confirm.
Mayor, would you like to add anything to that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I just want to show something before we vote here. Clerk Leonazio has provided this great-looking form. This is for anybody that wants to apply to be an election worker. This is a fillable PDF form, and it can be found on the city's website at the, under the city, under Government, City Clerk. And you go down to, there's a tab on the left-hand side on the bottom.
Coming in election.
An election worker, yes. And it's a fillable PDF form. You fill it out, and I believe you click to submit?
No.
No, you have to print it out and bring it to the city clerk's office or mail it.
Or email it.
Email is also an option, too. Counsel Wilkinson?
Just out of curiosity, is this a volunteer position?
It is. Oh, no.
No.
Our election workers are paid.
That's what I thought. That's why I wanted to make it clear.
Yep, thank you. Counsel Shade?
Yes, in the list, one of the addresses for somebody is listed as B O R. Do you know what that means? Can we get a clarification?
Um, that's one of my Board of Registers people. So, they only, the Board of Register people only do the information, the very first desk, if somebody doesn't know where to go.
Thank you.
Counsel Bona?
And does this have to be approved once? Will this cover both elections?
That's gonna cover all, all three of them.
Okay. Goes from August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four to August twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Okay, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Council Paper number twelve thousand four eleven, communication number fifty-five, from Mayor Maxey, recommending the reappointment of Heather Williams to serve as a member of the Conservation Commission for a term to expire August first, twenty twenty-seven.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Council Paper number twelve thousand four one two, communication number fifty-six, from Mayor Maxey, recommending the reappointment of Woodrow Boilat to serve as a member of the Conservation Commission for a term to expire August first, twenty twenty-seven.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Council Paper number twelve thousand four one three, communication number fifty-seven, from Mayor Maxey, recommending the appointment of Caleb Decarolus, Decarolus, to serve as a member of the Youth Commission for a term to expire August thirteenth, twenty twenty-seven.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Council Paper number twelve thousand four one four, communication from City Clerk Leonazio, requesting to allow the police chief and city clerk the responsibility to assign police officers to the polling place for the state primary on September third, twenty twenty-four.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Council Paper number twelve thousand four one five, in order calling the state primary for September third, twenty twenty-four from seven AM to eight PM. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to adopt.
Move to adopt.
And we have a second. Any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Olewskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
No.
Sapienza?
Yes. Council Paper number twelve thousand four one six, communication from City Clerk Leonazio, requesting to allow the police chief and city clerk the responsibility to assign police officers to the polling place for the special municipal election on October eighth, twenty twenty-four. This is the item on Graylock School.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Counselor Breen?
Oops. Um, will, will there be any early voting on this?
Um, yeah, we have to. So any of the mailing out ballots that have requested, any people who have requested all ballots for all elections?
That'll be included?
Will be included. Right now, we are close to a thousand four hundred.
Okay, and will it be early voting also?
For the week before, we can do that, yeah. That's not a problem. So early voting is, it, it falls, it starts ten days before the final. And I can definitely post it for the same, like we do with any other election. It'll be one Saturday, and it'll be the week before. It'll start the Saturday before, go through that week, and on the Friday before. And that'll be the early voting.
Okay.
In-person early voting.
Yes.
The mailing starts as soon as possible, soon as I, soon as I get my ballots, which I've already started. I've already done the proofs and everything. So tomorrow, they're gonna start printing them. Soon as I get the early ballots, I'll start the mailing out. I've already started with some of the labels. I'm waiting for us to finish off our early voting ballots for this election for September. Once all of those are in, and I know that we're not gonna have any more, I'll print out the remainder of them so that we'll be mailing those out for the next one as well.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Council Paper number twelve thousand four one seven, an order calling for the special municipal election for October eighth, twenty twenty-four, from seven AM to eight PM.
Move to adopt, but I have a point of order. They write on the, the paper says state primary election Tuesday, October eighth, twenty twenty-four, isn't supposed to be special municipal election. At least that's what our, the agenda you left on it.
According to this copy of the agenda, it says calling the special.
I'm not talking about the agenda, I'm talking about the actual order.
Document.
Yeah, the order's got state.
At the order in here.
So I'll put a motion on the table, if we can get a second, I'll make an amendment.
Second.
I'm, ah, I move to amend where it says state primary election to.
Special.
Special municipal election.
Second.
Thank you for catching that. It's like, wait, we're having Tuesday primaries.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the order to say special, special municipal election.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, one opposed. Going back to the original paper.
One of our.
Counselor Shade?
Yes, so just clarification for everybody out there. What we're doing is the first election we said is for the regular primary in Massachusetts. This one is going to be specifically on the eighth for the school vote. So just so there's no confusion, one is for Massachusetts municipal elections, and as a primary, the second one is for the school.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion to adopt. This will be a roll call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Olewskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
No.
Sapienza?
Yes. Okay, we have no licenses, open forum. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you have reached two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended. And as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks. Would anybody like to speak for open forum tonight?
I would.
Please step up to the mic and state your name and address for the record.
That's my record?
That mic is fine, yeah.
Hello, my name's Nikhil Olapoint, and I live at thirty-five Versailles Ave, North Adams. Good evening. I would like to speak about a project that is planned to take place on Bellows Pipe Trailhead, located at the North Adams side of Mount Graylock. I've emailed all of you about this concern. Bellows is a second home to me, so you could imagine the shock, disbelief, and fear I had when I learned about this project for the first time last week. I asked Mr. Lascarba how many meetings took place in two thousand twenty-two to discuss this, and he said one. One meeting in two years is not enough. Two weeks ago, two members of the committee, whose job it is to review those types of projects, were learning about it for the first time themselves. For two years, these members did not know about this plan, which originally called for the use of chemicals only. Mind you, this would be at our water supply. At the walkthrough, they told us logging would take place. I tried to bring up the disadvantage of taking away so many healthy native trees, and was told as a nature lover, I needed to stop looking at what we're going to lose and stop thinking of the possi, I'm sorry, and start thinking of the possibilities of what we could gain. Could does not equal will. When I asked the same person how long it would be before I could see the same forest that I see right now, he said thirty to forty years. In forty years, I will be eighty-four years old. I don't even know if I'll make it that long, so I don't want to wait. I'm asking that the residents of North Adams come together to stop this, and your job is to protect our city. Our ecosystem is part of our city. You have the ability to, to stop this, and I'm asking that you do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else open forum? Okay, moving on.
All right, you got one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, step up to the mic, name and address for the record, please.
Sean Loftus, forty Blackington Street. Two questions. I just wanted to know what, what Counselor Wilkinson was voting against for the election day's, uh, motions?
It's not a discussion.
You can't discuss at this point, no.
And second question was, um. Oh, who, or I guess, how many people would be hired for the election worker applications? Or like, who hired them? Like, if I just applied, would you, would, would I be hired?
Can't answer that question.
We can't answer that at this point in time.
You can apply.
All right.
You can apply, anybody's welcome.
Call the mayor's office.
No, actually, the election workers are.
Mark's office.
Anybody else? I'm sorry.
Can you get that to Melissa, and she can bring it over, the application?
Yeah, I think I stuck it back in the book here, hold on. Okay, give us one moment here. Okay.
If you stay here, I'll give you an application after, okay?
Yeah, 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 we'll do that after the meeting. Okay, please step up to the mic, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Erin Harwig, and I live at two thirty-six Church Street in North Adams. Now, I just had some comments about, this is my first meeting here, very excited. But your discussions about the marijuana zoning or opening more, giving away licenses and stuff, just my opinion as a resident of North Adams and a taxpayer, I think, I agree that there should not be a, like, unlimited thing, you should have a limit. I think the comment made by, let the companies fight them out, you know, fight each other out, was so inhuman and like, kind of disturbing that that's what you think in the world, you know? Like, I mean, we have so many businesses in North Adams that try to make it and unfortunately fail, and our town really doesn't have it, so I mean, to pin them against each other, like, it's just very disturbing to hear that from, like, our city council, that that's the way you want to go. Instead of like, being like, okay, let's just give a couple businesses and let's help them thrive. Like, so that's just my opinion that I thought I would like to share for you all.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Moving on. Mayor's updates.
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of updates on events that are coming up tomorrow, which is Wednesday, August fourteenth. We will hold our downtown celebration from five thirty to eight. Roads will be shut down starting at two o'clock, hope to see everyone there. On August fifteenth, we will have a community forum for the Graylock School project at Graylock School, starting at six PM, followed by a, another forum on August twenty-second, though both those dates are Thursdays, and that one will be held at Brayton. So this is an opportunity for people, the public, to not only learn more about our project, but also to tour both facilities, so I hope to see you there. In addition, on Sunday, August twenty-fifth, we will be hosting Motorama again in our city, which brings many visitors to our community. So I hope to see all of you there, those are my events updates. And then I'm excited, very excited, to announce that the city of North Adams is the recipient of a one million sixty-one thousand dollar municipal vulnerability preparedness grant. This is for flood resiliency. This was something that Stacy Abucy and Tim Lascarba worked with, with the BRPC. So this money is designated to fund a full engineering and hydraulic study of Fuller, Bryant, Frederick, and Houghton, Barth, Eagle, Marietta, and Liberty, Morgan Ave, and a section of Summit and State Street. As you remember, those are high-impact areas that we've been struggling with over the last two summers. So we're very excited to get this. We've done some preliminary engineering, which we paid for out of the money we received from the state. But this is very, this will launch us into the right direction to solve our problem in those areas, so we're very excited about that. I know the infamous question is, when are the roads gonna get paved? We are hoping very, very, very soon. I've been after the contractors to keep filling on milling all of the roads, but we have sidewalk repairs to do in all those areas that are dug up before we can get the roads done. So I ask for everyone's patience. I know the concerns about the corner of River and Houghton Street. The company will be coming out to, to fill those areas in, but it'll be nice when it's done, we just gotta get through it. So, thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Okay, committee reports in minutes. Okay, liaison updates and counselor concerns. Counselor Morrow?
I have a question for the mayor. For the Graylock and Brayton forms that you're having, would those be available online as well?
Yes, there will be a component that will be via Zoom, correct, Barbara? Yes, and the TV station will be there. We will be doing a walking tour, so that is kind of iffy. But the actual presentation of the school project, as well as the Q and A, will be available on Zoom, and Pete will be joining us from the TV station.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
Not live, he said.
Correct.
Right. Any more counsel concerns? Okay, we have the Fall Foliage Parade coming up on October sixth. Christine Hoyt of Monmouthshire has submitted me a form to fill out, and any counselors that are be, to be interested in walking in that parade, would you please let me know, either by email or sometime after the meeting, if you so desire to walk with us in the, in the Fall Foliage Parade? Any further concerns, comments?
I was just gonna throw in addition to the parade.
Go ahead, counselor.
If any of us are walking, it'd probably be wise if we could find a banner holder, because we always end up gathering on the day of the parade, and we don't have a banner holder, and we're scurrying to find someone. So if anybody has.
I believe that's the job of the president.
I'll, I'll do my best. Last, last year, it was former counselor Becky Cohen.
She did, she did a fantastic job.
She did, she did a wonderful job. Okay. All right, hearing no further. Counselor concerns, correspondence. Any further correspondence? None? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.